All right, everybody ready? We'll go ahead at least and you can call us to order and get into our session. All right. Good evening and welcome to the special called meeting of the Stafford County School Board beginning at 6:30 on Tuesday, November 10th. We'll look to my right and we'll go and introduce ourselves as part of our roll call.
Patricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
Susan Randall, George Washington District.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood District.
Pamela Young, Darsonville.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths, Wide Water.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth.
All right, we have six of seven, so we have a quorum. Can we move on and have approval of the meeting agenda?
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next session will put us into closed session. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia to discuss and/or consider the acquisition of real property for the construction of high school number six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in closed session. So any that are not involved in the closed-
...board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Hall, can you poll the board?
Aye.
Aye.
Agreed.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are out of our closed session. I'm going to close this special called meeting and we will reconvene in four minutes and start our meeting at 7:10. Good evening and welcome to the November 10th regular meeting of the Stafford County School Board. Again, I will ask, I'll go to my left this time, and we will introduce ourselves as part of our roll call.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth District.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths, Wide Water District.
Pamela Young, Darsonville.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood District. Irene Hollerback, the Acquia District.
Susan Randall, George Washington District.
And Tricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
All right, we have a full quorum this evening. Next on the agenda is our approval.
Move to approve the agenda?
Been moved and seconded. Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, in our, one of our favorite things is our awards and recognitions. I'd like to bring up Ms. Hunter, Mr. Berry up here to tell us about some recognitions we have for our community members.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members and Dr. Kizner. I'm here this evening to thank and recognize the community partners and members who help support the Operation Warm More Than a Coat campaign to raise more than $30,000 for students in need of a new winter coat. Community collaboration and partnership is key to the success of Operation War. We especially wish to thank the Stafford County Fire and Rescue Department under the leadership of Chief Cardello and Mountain View Fire and Safety Association under the leadership of volunteer fire chief Mark Doyle. Thank you to the volunteers and staff who sorted more than- Thank you to the volunteers and staff who sorted more than 1,200 new coats on Wednesday, October 28th at Mountain View Fire Station. Their time ensured students in need receive their new winter coats before winter begins. Thank you to the community members and anonymous individuals who donated to this year's campaign. At this time, I would like to recognize the community partners who supported Operation War. Certificates of recognition will be mailed to each of the partners. American Legion Post 290, Augustine Golf Club, Falmouth Fire Department, Ferry Farm Baptist Church, Mission Barbecue, Pier Point Construction, Rotary Club of Stafford, Stafford Crossing Community Church, Stafford Education Foundation, Stafford Ruin Club, Topside Federal Credit Union, Transurban, the Wawa Foundation, and White Oak Volunteer Fire Department. Thank you all for your support. In addition, this evening, I would like to thank, Mike, you can go to the next slide. I would like to recognize the generous donations by two community partners. The Rotary Club of Stafford donated $4,500 to purchase eBooks for the Sora Virtual Library. In previous years, the Rotary Club has supported students by providing dictionary donations to all third grade students. However, to support the new learning environments, the Rotary Club chose to provide a donation for purchasing eBooks this year. I would also like to recognize Shehe Toyota of Stafford, who donated $26,000 to the division. This generous donation will support CTE fees for disadvantaged students as well as develop parent support programs and training for English language learners and their families. The donation removes financial barriers previously limiting disadvantaged students from enrolling in CTE courses and reinforces the importance of CTE programs which prepare students for career paths through project-based and work-based learning. In addition, the donation will enable English learner instruction and the ESOL Welcome Center to assist English language learner families with student fees, provide additional resources for support, and create family workshops and classes. Thank you again to the Rotary Club of Stafford and Shehe Toyota of Stafford for their generous support.
I would tell you, I was at Rocky Run today and I saw some of the jackets being distributed and the kids were very excited, so thanks.
We have great community partners who have really stepped up during this time even more than they always have, so. All right, we're moving on to our citizen comments. Each speaker is allotted two minutes. We don't have anybody signed up this evening and looking into the audience, I recognize pretty much every face here that works for Stafford County Public Schools, but if there is somebody here to speak, if you would just raise your hand. Is anybody crawling under the? So anyway, then I will not read us in for citizen comments since no one is here this evening. Our next item is our board committee reports. Main report is from our Joint Schools Working Committee. I will give a short overview of the meeting. We met last Thursday here in the chambers here. We had all of our six members here and the highlights, I would say, is I thought it was a very good meeting. We did have some discussion about per pupil expenditure and who we should be compared with. Should we be considered with cities? Should we be with counties? And I think eventually we were able to move the conversation more to what really makes sense for Stafford. We did highlight the local share, but the other area that I think we all felt very good about was we were talking about the salary scales and we tasked staff to come up with how should our salary scales? And it seemed like we had some general consensus about Prince William County and Spotsylvania, maybe not quite yet Fairfax, but we're working on it. But if we start with those, and I thought that was a positive move of a recognition of our comparison counties with regard to salary scales moving forward. We also talked about legislative initiatives that we would like to make sure that the Board of Supervisors is aware of. We mean dealing with cost to compete. Secondly, the maintaining of the ADM going forward in next year's budget with the state. And I thought those were positive moves that we would be working together going forward. We will be meeting again in December, and I'm sorry, I don't have it off the top of my head, but we will be meeting again in December before the close of the school year. December 1st, 9th.
Are you talking about the CIP meeting?
No, this was for the joint-
Oh, okay.
I will make that announcement at the end, though. So that was the Joint Schools Working Committee. Next, we'll move on to board member comments. All right, who wants to go first? It'll be nice tonight, who wants to start us off? Dr. Chase, thank you.
So I attended the CGS Governing Board meeting on October 15th. We got a summary of the AP exam results and I'll have that sent to the clerk so she can share it with everybody. There's also plans to change the application again this year to try again to continue with the efforts to increase diversity. So what one was just, nobody is taking the PSAT 8 this year in any of the counties and so they will be using whatever alternate tests each county gives, so the MAPS or the STAR, whatever it is. They will no longer use honors and awards as part of the rubric because they feel that that may be discriminatory. And then they're going to increase the number of recommendations in the hopes of individuals perhaps being able to get recommendations from community members who may know about the students in a way that teachers may not. And then they'll accept four and then they will use the top three of the four recommendations. So if you inadvertently pick somebody who, for whatever reason, gives you a really poor recommendation, that would not be part of it. And then they, we had a slight budget adjustment. There were four students more than what was predicted, but interestingly Stafford County had 13 additional students this year. So over what was projected, so they had a higher enrollment in CGS in Stafford this year. Spotsylvania had about 12 fewer. So, all right, that's all I've got.
Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to say if he had an opportunity to visit some of our schools and see the hybrid learning program and the Internet cafes, and I'm impressed with just how effectively our school system is rising to the challenges and I'm excited to see how many people are moving into alternate assignments and doing such, so with such success. I also, as part of the Head Start Policy Council meeting on the 27th, I would like to congratulate the new Chair and Vice Chair, the parent of the Advisory Council, Kaylin Jennings Knight and Ashley Goodman. And I really want to say how much I appreciate our community partners and parents and grandparents and other support work together to make the Head Start Program such a success. They're, they were proud to announce that they've had a 90% success rate and parents achieving their goals this year. I think that the Head Start Program certainly led the way in a lot of our decisions as far as opening up the schools and instituting the hybrid program. I just want to say thank you again and that's it.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to welcome K through five back to school. I always felt that this group of students needed to be in school, so I'm happy for Dr. Kizner agreeing to add also the Internet cafes in all the schools to ensure that students that did not have access to Wi-Fi are able to come in and get access. While I'm very excited to have all of these students back, I am still virtual, but I'm still concerned with the high COVID cases and positivity rate. So I'm hoping that everybody continue to mask up, remembering that, you know, the way how we beat this COVID is to, and to keep the schools open as long as possible is to ensure that we protect each other distance and stay masked. Thank you.
Ms. Hollerback?
I don't really have lots to report, but I do want to extend a big thank you to a person who's been fielding a ton of emails lately from parents and teachers and wanted to say thank you, Dr. Kizner. Keep knocking it out of the park.
Ms. Randall?
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chair. I would like, today was Ferry Farms' first day, so I got to be there with Dr. Kizner to greet some of the little kids and to say hi to a lot of the educators and watch some of the hybrid learning and, gosh, it's just so exciting when you get to see the kids face to face and using paper and pencil. That was just, and laptops closed. I was just loving that. I also wanted to remind everybody on the cabinet and the board that we have an event coming next Thursday. Missy had sent a hold the date and so I sent everybody a link to sign up with the details of that event, so, and I'm willing to be a driver and I hope you like big cars. Thanks.
Ms. Healy?
I wanted to wish all our staff and families and community members who are veterans a Happy Veterans Day tomorrow and I hope everyone enjoys their day. I'm sad that we're not in our business as usual school and able to see all these wonderful events that we have at every level of our schools and every one of our schools for veterans. So we're thinking about you and I certainly want to extend my personal appreciation. Thank you.
And happy birthday to the U.S. Marine Corps.
I'd like to just make a couple comments. First, again, our community partners. I know that we have come and recognized some tonight, but just the outreach from our community of how they can help has been just really amazing. And just want to say to those who have volunteered and or said, what can we do? How can we be there? We are really blessed with an amazing community who wants to support our schools and I look forward to discontinuing, certainly post-COVID, but also as we as a board have identified, we have some concerns or growths that may be coming in the future and so we want to just continue to solidify those wonderful partnerships. But I really want to thank those who have reached out in the past couple months. Next Tuesday night is the Board of Supervisors meeting. We voted at our meeting last, well, two weeks ago, I guess, about a stipend for our school staff. I would like to just reiterate again the huge investment and change in job description that many of our teachers have experienced. It is not teaching itself, it is how to teach, how to reach. And it is different this year. And as I said previously, I understand many different careers have been impacted by COVID, but I would say that the teaching profession and schools are by far the most impacted and the most changed. And I really hope that the Board of Supervisors will support our request using funds from the school district to support a stipend for our staff who have worked tirelessly and I know have spent many nights and hours trying to deliver the best educational experience that they can. And many of them have hit it out of the park and also, you know, have been there for our students and for each other. So again, I really hope that that is something that our community will recognize is important going forward. And then last, I would just like to make a comment about growth going forward. I know that I have, this is so much a topic. We have talked about pre-COVID and I think many people believe that during this COVID time, we are going probably in the opposite direction. Just would like to tell everybody that pre-COVID, at this point, a year ago, our house starts were 631, post-COVID, we have 639. Home sales, 1723 last year, 2041 this year. Average days of a house on the market in Stafford County was 39 a year ago, it is now 23. I'm just making that aware, that we need to be planning for growth and for our students to be coming back and for our students to be in buildings. A virtual model is a very enticing and model that we are needing to use now and maybe something that goes forward, but I would say the majority of the families, or at least the ones that reach out to me, is they will be in these buildings for the foreseeable future until their children graduate, like mine did, and we cannot lose sight of that fact going forward. So just wanted to share that with you tonight. And Dr. Kizner?
Just a few things. I do want to reiterate what some of you said and Miss Young talked about. There's no question that our community is seeing an increase of COVID-19 and usually the whole state is, but let's just talk about Stafford. So, you know, we collect data and we review the data and we, tomorrow morning, we will update our last week's data. It takes us a little while to get things from the Health Department and then also we do, I think, an excellent job, Colette and her team, of contact tracing. I bring that up is because our mitigation strategies at school are working very well. And what we're noticing is that, two things. One, there are some events that are taking place in the community that people unfortunately then become positive and so then we have to react to it. But I also think there's a positive part, and what could be positive about that, is that a lot of parents have contacted us to let us know what's going on in their home and we really appreciate that. So if a parent is tested positive and they have a child, they let us know that they're keeping the child home, but then we still have to follow our procedure. So the open communication, I think, is very important. So we don't want, in a sense, to create like a chilling experience where people are going to be identified as doing something wrong, you know? But, you know, masks and social distancing and, you know, we're going into Thanksgiving and, you know, you hear about family events and then the weather's been amazing this last week, but I hear it may eventually become fall and winter. And so, you know, we'll all be indoors. So I just hope people will, you know, continue to follow the best practices. I will also say that we're beginning, we're stopped losing children. We're seeing children, our enrollment go back up. We actually are over the 2,900 number again and, which is good. We anticipate, if you read today's VSBA thing, they had an article about Fairfax County Schools, and we're seeing a similar profile. High school, we actually went up. Middle school, we lost about 50, 60 kids. I'm giving you about two weeks old data, this, you know, October 23rd data. But the elementary is where we saw the greatest loss and mainly kindergarten. But we're beginning now, I think, has some to do with the hybrid model starting, families coming back. So Lyle Knoll and his team are working on enrollment projections and the best practices from people in his position throughout the state and honestly, looking at other states also, is to use a 10-year rolling average, but to recognize that this year was probably an outlier, okay? And so that's, there's three models, but I just want to let you know that the good news is we were reporting earlier, you know, losing, 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 and that trend has reversed, okay? So that's a very positive thing. Anyway, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent items?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or concern about any of the three items? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously approving 8.01, 2, and 3. Moving on to our information items, our first item is regarding the school year calendar and we have this on for information for two weeks to provide the ability for input from our stakeholders. Are there any questions since, either since the last meeting or questions about the calendar that's, that are presented? Yes, Ms. Randall, sorry.
I just wanted to say that I did receive some excellent feedback and one of the things that came up was why are we starting three weeks early? Why are we so early? I just wanted to let people know that if you, when you look at the start, you also have to look at the end and the end date was chosen so that it would be done before that we leave for the winter break. So when students come back, teachers have a day for themselves to get their next semester, year, however it is for them, set up and then the students come back in for the new year in a new semester. But sometimes people got hung up on that first date and just didn't look at the end date, so I just wanted to clarify that and I really do appreciate the feedback.
Madam Chairman, just looking at what's on our agenda, I'm not sure if that's what's going to, are they going to put that on screen? It looks like they dropped a line because this shows December 17th is spring break, March is graduation. So if this is going to be published on our website, we need to make sure that we show these dates accurately. Right. I'm sure the seniors might not mind graduating in March, especially since we have a whole week to graduate, but want to make sure we're transparent. Thank you.
Just real quickly, we've received about 24 comments through different communication. Thursday, I have my parents and staff advisory, it's been, pretty much everybody's been positive. Some people would like a longer summer break. I'm not going to tell you otherwise, I would like a long summer. So, but that, you requested and we distributed and we tweeted it out and we did a whole bunch of things. So next month, we'll compile and see if there's anything that's, you know, significant for your consideration.
Yeah, no, it's just a comment. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to know, Dr. Kizner, I know you put the calendar and everything on the website. My only concern is usually for those parents that are not in tune, like if they're working, they depend on their students giving them that- they depend on their students giving them that information. I mean, they may not go on vacation like everyone else, but they still, um, they still need to know. And I was wondering how we plan to?
We sent out the calendar to everybody.
Okay.
This Friday's letter.
Okay.
Sent out again, so we send it out multiple ways.
Via email?
Yeah.
That's the problem, but, okay.
All right. Hearing no more comments on the calendar, let's move on to the professional development policy. As I understood, this is, was, um, dictated by state law, but it seemed like we are new, new legislation, but it appears that we are already complying with that. But any additional comments or concerns? Ms. Randall.
Is this, um, a, um, professional development that will happen every year or is this a one-time thing or is it just updated each year or how is this done?
Yeah, so this was a new law passed and the expectation is that this is an ongoing professional development annually.
All right.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. If, if that's the case, then we should be clear in this policy because the way I read it, it just says at least once. It doesn't say per, per school year, per calendar year, whatever. So if, if we, if that is the intention, then we, we need to have that clear to avoid any, um, confusion on the part of, of staff in the future. Perhaps when that comes back to us, that can be clarified. And, and I would suggest we track the, the law, which is what we usually do with our policy changes, unless we want to go beyond that. But traditionally, when these come up for changes in, in the, the state code, you know, that's the explanation that, that's given to us. We need to change our policy to be in conformance with the, with the state code.
Is there a thought that there will be additional costs to this particular? It seemed like this is already incorporated in our budget, but, um, just so that we know for future.
Is there a question about hitting annually?
Asking if it's going to additional costs in order to keep going this, uh, professional development.
Well, we, we do this professional development annually anyway. It's just, it's just memorializing what we actually already do.
That's how I read it. I just was saying if we did need to, um, to allocate additional funds to meet this requirement, we should very much be clear when we go to the Board of Supervisors. I know many times we are grilled on what is required and what isn't required. I wouldn't mind, um, and I will defer this to the Fab, but if we want to put, when they ask about professional development, which has come up in the past, we may now, okay, asterisk, I don't know, whatever word you want to say, and say that that is, um, part of, um, required cost, not, please note that I'm not saying that we don't need it, but I'm just saying when we are defending some of the costs, let's make that, um, clear, that, um, this is required training and necessary, not, but. All right. Moving on to the, um, proposed school board governance structuring and approval of revisions to the policy, um, I will, uh, defer that to the board if we would like any additional discussion, which we may do at our, um, board event, retreat, whatever, in, in December, we, we may carve out a portion of time to talk about this again.
Yeah, I just had one thing, which was it looked like we had talked in the work session about just having two subcommittees, but then what's here is still three. So I just didn't know if that was just the earlier document or was there now a desire to do three?
Yep. We haven't had an additional meeting since then, so I left everything for open until we can come to retreat and we decide how we want to go forward.
All right. Anybody wanting to go back to high school? 10.04 for our high school program of studies, high school course catalog. Are there any, uh, particular questions or is there any comment or presentation on that? Just wanted to check. Or Dr. Chase, if you want to get us started.
Yeah, just, just, um, channeling my Mrs. Healy here. I, I noticed there was reference to the VDOE and then the VBOE. So is there a Virginia Board of Education as well as a Virginia Department of Education? Are they, or was that just a typo? I just wasn't sure what that was.
Come on down.
Yes, Dr. Warner, there is a Board of Education and a Department of, oh, sorry, Dr. Chase. Board of Education and a Department of Education.
Okay, and so they do different, it just was like, like there'd be two lines with VDOE and then there'd be a couple lines with VBOE and I just didn't know what.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The Board of Education stands, sets the standards of accreditation, the standards of quality, the Department of Education implements it.
Great, terrific.
Okay. Um, good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kizner, um, I'd take a moment to wish our Marine families a happy 245th birthday today and all of our military families a happy Veterans Day tomorrow. In your agenda packet, you should have received a copy of the program of studies as well as a table of changes that, um, we made this year. The process this year was similar to past years, just done virtually. Uh, I coordinated on behalf of learning and organizational development and we began by first looking at policies from the Virginia Board of Education as well as the Virginia Department of Education. You can see those in the table of changes. Those things are highlighted in yellow. Lot of work with school leadership, including counseling directors as well as instructional leadership, the Office of Equity and Accountability, and student services to incorporate their input on those changes. So some of the new changes, um, are two new courses that are added. We didn't add a whole lot of courses in our current situation, but two of them came from the Virginia Department of Education. The first is African-American history. This is a VDOE-created elective that they are piloting in several schools throughout the state right now. And in the spring, they will be releasing a curriculum outline and an instructor's guide as well as the online modules that they are piloting throughout the state right now. Um, and we'll work with teachers to develop a local curriculum around that once you've approved it and the state sends out the resources. The other one is the work-based internship. This moves us towards the Virginia profile of a graduate in which the vision is that kids will be able to earn high school credit through work-based experiences. And so we've added in an internship where students would be able to go and do an independent study as part of an internship and get high school credit for that. Along with that same line is that we are expanding opportunities to identify more work-based learning, uh, courses. Those are identified by a little black triangle, uh, throughout the course catalog. This, the new standards of quality add a high-quality work-based experience as one of those things to meet the advanced course requirements. So all students have to take at least an AP, an IB, a DE, and honors, but they can also now do a high-quality work-based learning experience. And so those courses that we have identified so far, as meeting those expectations are identified. Students can also get a, uh, career and technical credential to meet that requirement as well. Some other changes that we have, um, some adjustments to course titles and hours and some of those kinds of things from the VDOE. The Virginia Board of Education, um, did a new, uh, STEMs graduation seal that is replacing the mathematics and technology seal. Uh, so those students who do excel at mathematics and technology and other things can now get that STEM seal. Um, and then we added in a section to describe our new Teachers for Tomorrow program that we're doing in partnership with Jermana and the University of Mary Washington. Um, and so we've outlined that and explained that better in this new program of studies. And then once again, you can see all the major changes in that table of changes. And so if you have any questions, I thank you for your time and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that I can.
Ms. Randall.
Um, thank you. I, I had a couple of questions, actually. So for the Teach Tomorrow, you said, uh, you have, uh, a, um, MOU currently with, uh, GCC and UMW.
Right.
But I remember Dr. Kizner mentioning not too long ago that we're working with or working towards, uh, VCU, GMU, but is that for this or is that for something else?
You're talking about the dual enrollment classes?
I don't know. I, I thought you said that you were trying to work towards working with, um, education departments in other schools to get other.
Yeah, so.
So I didn't know if that would be associated with this or is that, I'm sorry, associated with something else?
Yeah, for the Teach for Tomorrow, we're working with these two schools.
Okay.
But there is a, a hope that school systems will be able to negotiate with local community college to get a better rate for the, uh, course.
Okay.
Credits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other thing is, um, pre-COVID, um, I, I had talked with, uh, Dr. Kizner and with Vernon Green that he was working with a cybersecurity program or pilot program at North Stafford where I guess the cybersecurity curriculum wasn't always up to something that would be, uh, certifiable cybersecurity, I guess. And he was going to work with the educators, train the educators, you know, and pilot some intern and experiential opportunities. Is, is that part of this or is that something separate or, I'm not sure if I'm asking a question in the right place?
I think I understand your question, but I can't answer it.
Okay.
Because it's not my area of facilitation.
Okay.
So I, we can direct that question to, um, Mrs. Robinson, who is our lead for career and work-based learning.
Okay.
And she may be able to better answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, I could just, maybe just briefly touch upon it, but we'll get you a, an expanded answer.
Okay.
So, um, there are courses, again, through Jermana and, uh, GCube, I think that's the company.
Yeah.
They're working with some of our students at North Stafford High School in the cybersecurity.
Okay.
And if the students take additional classes at Jermana, they get a higher level credentialing.
Gotcha.
So we're trying to move that partnership to go beyond what the high school offers. And I use GCube because one of our students last year did complete it. And then they employed him.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's a real win for us.
Right.
It's a win for the child.
Partnership, yep.
Yeah, so that's, that's where I think the conversation that I, I think you and I had at.
Yes.
At one time, but we'll get, actually Thursday is talking about timing. We actually have a meeting with Jermana to talk about these programs.
Okay.
So I'll be able to give you guys an update.
Okay, and then, so is this then available? I know it was a special partnership with North Stafford, but is the same courses and whatnot the same through the five high schools currently?
I, I need to find out more.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, for the African-American history program, um, you, I, I heard what you're saying about the, the state being encouraged in the development of a curriculum. Will there be a textbook for that?
Not.
You said modules, so I didn't know if that was meaning excluding textbooks?
Um, we were not planning on doing a textbook to start off with.
Okay.
Mainly because it wasn't in the budget.
Right.
Um, the modules that the VDOE will be coming out with will be a key part of that curriculum.
Okay.
And then, uh, there are other free online resources, open educational resources that we intend to incorporate into our local curriculum.
Okay.
To be able to start the course without a textbook.
Okay.
Uh, if at some stage we decide that we need a textbook, then we would go and request funding and go through that adoption process.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Warner.
Thank you for your presentation.
Uh huh.
I'm very interested in the concept of the work-based internships. Um, I have a couple of questions. When we used to do internships where I was a research scientist, we had many high school students come in, but we were required to pay them a stipend. We were not allowed to do them free. Is there going to be, um, is that going to be a requirement for these internships? Um, and also, I'll just ask all my questions, you can probably answer them. Student access to internships, do we have a lot of public-private partnerships where we, we will be able to offer a substantial number of them? And what about transportation and making sure that, you know, students aren't excluded for, um, reasons, say, they don't have the right clothes, they don't have transportation or whatever?
Again, you know, not being the CTE facilitator, I can't comment too thoroughly. Um, I know we are looking to expand all of those partnerships that we can. And I think the idea behind the, uh, work-based independent study, the internship, is that if a student was offered such an internship in a variety of different circumstances, they could come to the school and apply for that course and then be able to get credit for that internship. So I would anticipate that there would be, um, a variety of different opportunities that kids would be given or possibly, you know, find and then be able to come back and get credit for that opportunity. Um, but Mrs. Robinson or Stephanie Ells, uh, would be able to comment on that further. So we can get you more information on those.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm, I had another question, but I'm just going to piggyback on Dr. Warner's, uh, your, your response, which is just some concern that, um, you know, students with families with certain connections are going to be more likely to get certain kinds of internships and, and I would really like to see, uh, the school division do what it can to try to level that playing field a little bit and, and make the effort to actually provide those opportunities to all our students, not just the students whose family connections can make, make things happen. And then, uh, I noticed that the IB courses are now open to everyone without having to apply. So are we talking about students, um, would then be entering the full IB program in order to take those classes? So if you don't go to Mountain View or, or Brook Point, um, and you want to be IB, um, you no longer have to do an application?
Uh, my understanding is the, um, the application is shifting to an application of interest so that, uh, it's not a barrier type of thing, but students would be able to notify if they're interested in doing the diploma program.
Mm-hmm.
I think students of both Brook and Mountain View have been able to take individual courses without being admitted or as part of that full IB diploma program. And what we're saying now is anyone interested in the IB diploma program, uh, can submit an application of interest just to notify those IB coordinators that they would like to be part of that program and then they will work with them.
Okay, I'm.
Is that not answering your question?
Just, I just, I don't really understand what's different. Like before you had to, so now instead of a full-out application, you just say you're interested, so then you'll be able to do it if you express interest?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, there's no longer, uh, criteria that you have to meet, just if you wish to do the program, you, you may do the program. Is that correct?
Yeah, the IB diploma program.
Right, okay. And, um, I, I would be interested, uh, maybe the committee that, that, I'm spacing on, on the, the one that's, uh, sort of, um, measurement and whatever, accountability or I don't know, whatever, just to, to keep up on the numbers for, for all of these different programs so that we get a sense of what that looks like. And then I just want to put a plug in. I think the theory of knowledge class is a really phenomenal opportunity that I would really love to see at all our schools, not just two of our schools, so that, that all our students have the opportunity to have a course like that. And that's all.
Thank you.
Do want to just touch upon the question about internships. Very important, your questions. I don't, you think I would remember. I know I had in the budget, I don't know if it ever made the final cut, an internship coordinator, because you do have to build relationships. You are right, there are some families, there are some children that we have to establish the partnership. I also, this is to all my colleagues out here, we have a lot to offer for internships. We have architects, we have planning, we have technology, we have buildings and grounds, you know, we have of course instruction. So, you know, sometimes we look far and the, and the answer's right in front of us. And the state is very flexible with the internship requirements. If you could demonstrate kids are learning and have, and picking up a skill and proficiency, they could receive a credit. So, um, I, I do value that you want to make sure this is very inclusive. Yeah.
Jump in now, I'll wait my turn. Yeah, um, nice. So, um, most of the questions that I've had are, have been answered. I just want, and I think Dr. Chase may have, um, made this point, but I just want to make sure that we are tracking not only for governor's school, because I've, I've heard you say a lot about that, but the IB and the AP program, where we're going and how we're doing. And this is just not about black and brown kids, these are poor kids, anybody, we're trying to reach equity. It's just not about a certain number of kids, it's just across the board. But I do want to talk about black and brown kids when it comes to the African-American I just wanted to know, and it seems like, uh, that question was answered, like this came as a module, right? That's a pilot for a module?
It's five modules that the state is developing.
The state developing, you're just going to take the, the module? The state developing, you're just going to take the module and kind of fit it in and do a pilot program? Like, who's involved in the program?
The pilot program's happening in 16 different high school classrooms around the state, that they're doing that pilot right now, and kind of learning and rolling out those modules and testing them out, and developing the resources and materials.
And who, I mean, because we don't have a large minority staff, so I'm like, who is actually involved in this?
The pilot's not here in Stafford County, it's throughout the state.
But when you do pull it in, when you do pull it in, like, how are you planning on implementing it, just going along with what the module state that you need to do? Because I know the question was asked, are we going to have a book at some point in time?
Right.
So is there somebody that intellectually is looking at this and saying, yes, that has the background, and saying, yes, this is good, but we could add more? Because at some point, you just don't want to take the minimum, right?
Correct.
You want to be the best. And this is a conversation I was just having with someone today about African-American history, because African history, African-American history doesn't start with African-American history, it starts with African history.
Correct.
And I was just dismayed, this is something I was sharing, because I found out that, you know, not every black person that came over came as slaves. There were free individuals in Florida, and that worked alongside Spaniards, and they were free, and everybody was trying to go there. And so that would be a beautiful thing to put into these modules. So that's why I was inquiring about that, because one thing, sometimes you think you're doing good, and you bring in, you know, African-American history, and just to, sometimes you just open up wounds on kids, because they start talking about slavery. So I just wanted to know what's in there, and something that is sensitive like that, might want to look at that a little bit more, and make sure that somebody that has that background brings it, brings in their insight into this.
Yes, once the state releases the full details, like I said, we've got these five module outlines right now, it doesn't give us a whole lot of detail. Once they release the information, the instructor's guide, and all the resources that they're developing through this pilot program, we would have those, and we would convene a committee that would then take those things and take a look at them and develop our local curriculum guide to go along with it.
Good.
First step would be for us to add the course to our program of studies, which is our purpose here. And then, once the state releases the information, then we will convene our committee, made up of a variety of people, to figure out exactly what our curriculum here.
And the majority of people will include the team that Dr. Kizner has, which is the equity team, right?
And let me just start before this. This is, the state, for over two years, has been studying it with historians, educators, stakeholders all around, not even just Virginia, the country. We're actually one of the leading states to offer this. And then, as described, 16, we have 330 high schools in Virginia, 16 schools were selected to pilot, and we will learn next year, obviously, you're going to see, if not all, most schools, high schools offering this. So I just want to let you know that what's being taught in those 16 schools have been well-vetted with people who, I would say, are experts in that area.
That's what I'm asking, thank you.
Right, yeah. The modules and everything were developed, and it came out of the recommendations from the governor's African-American History Education Commission. And this is one of the things that they put forward as the recommendations and that the VDOE have acted on.
Okay.
That's it. Any other questions? Okay, I just have a couple.
Thank you very much.
Yep, I have a couple comments.
Oh, sorry.
But just quick ones, just quick ones. I think we're all hearing something about, you know, the emphasis on that learning outside of the classroom and these high-quality. I was going to mention to Dr. Kizner, and he got there, you know, is that something we want to consider in the budget? And I would just say, look at the list of those partners that we had there, you know, Shehe Toyota, I mean, we have some really neat opportunities for our mechanical students. They definitely don't want me in there, I can tell you. But, you know, we really have a lot of partners, and right now, I hope, from the COVID experience of those lists of people, really maybe even creating a letter saying, we are moving to a, I'm sorry, the high quality, I don't have it up on my screen, to reach out to those partners who have already been reaching out to us in other ways, and say, gosh, we think you'd be a great candidate, you know? Because a lot of times, and having been a PTO president, people just need to be asked many times. And we can put up posters, we can say, join in, but you know, that letter that just says, we think you'd be a great partner, and we are willing to walk us, you know, beside you in that. So that isn't just for you, but I just think as in general, because we just have so many people who really want to be there, and I think they just need to be asked.
Yeah, totally true, because that's what I did with Toyota. I just walked up and asked.
Right. So, anyway, I think that's, and we think about the partnership we have with the county, with our firefighting program. You know, we have started something also with the county. The county may also be an opportunity for someone who may want to be in administration. Let's start to even get that partnership, too, if you want to be a planner, and even I prefer to put us on the school side, but I'm trying to be, since we're sitting in their chambers, I'm trying to be. But there's a lot of things within the county staff, too, that have similar things.
TIS office.
I think it'd be great for us to reach out and maybe do that as well. But I know that's not right, just in your area, but I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
If anything else, board members comes up, make sure that you send those, any questions to Dr. Kizner or to Missy, if something comes up between now and our next meeting on that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next one is about the creation and calendar setting for stakeholder input regarding high school six. We also put on there, I will say, elementary and middle school. This is really for our planning going forward. In the past, we have received community stakeholder input as we begin to get into the planning of the new schools, things that we learned differently. We have a prototype, and then we try it once or twice, we say, ooh, gosh, lessons learned. So I was just sort of trying to have us begin to think, and I don't know, Mr. Anderson or Dr. Kizner, if you have sort of a, sort of plan of how we may want to go about that, but I do think we need to start getting our community input. It looked like maybe coming up in the springtime would be maybe the time, but I will be open for your all's comments on that.
I would like to say that Susan and I both sat on the steering committee for the Moncur rebuild, and the, we had staff there, we had community members, we had, Bob Thomas also sat with us, from a Board of Supervisor perspective. And we came up with what is now the new Moncur Elementary School, with input from everyone. We had architects involved, we had a consultant that was leading this, you know, the discussion and mapping out what the new Moncur would look like. Are we going to plan to do that again, or are we just going to use the same prototype high school?
No, we're planning that, and I've read those documents, and I saw Susan's on the cover, Ms. Randall's on the cover of the.
I'm with her.
Yeah, yeah.
She's hiding over there.
So it's a good piece of work, and the thing I would want to mention is that the feedback from stakeholders needs to be structured very well, so we're not wasting people's time. And it's really the big, the big question, the goals, the, the high school is going to be the first priority. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do to get that project done and open by 2025, so we're working on that right now. We would also want to be working on the middle school next year, earlier in the year, because we want to be ready for the CIP submittal in August. And so that's going to be one that takes some work, and we'll want to get some feedback. We're also going to be using our advisory committee, that's already been formed, to get some input from them on this. But I would say it just needs to be very structured, and we're talking about that now and making those plans. There's probably less work to do with the elementary school because of the big effort that was done, and we would want to go back and sort of evaluate how do, how do we think that turned out, as far as the Moncur Elementary School that was completed.
Is there a plan to have one or two board members serve on that committee, and maybe even have a BOS member or two as well?
We're early in that process, but we would want to structure that and figure out how we want to get that feedback. And I would say, yes, definitely, I mean, we want to have your feedback, for sure, and how we target the stakeholder meetings. We still have to design that and have some internal discussions.
Got it, thanks.
Sure.
The thought to me was that we would be bringing this back, but I just wanted to make sure if we had a sense from the board, the timing that we think we should begin to kick some of these things off. I am more of a, let's begin to, I know COVID has impacted things, but some, something to, I think, also beginning to get the community, you know, engaged in this process, because I do think the more success we have, I will tell you, every year that probably any one of us has sat on the board, the war, cost comes up for construction. I think the more that we engage our community on what we need, and also what is, what their expectations are as well, I think will help move the project forward with some buy-in by people understanding what is needed to educate the student of today. So that's just sort of the thinking, so maybe we can, you know, come back, we may not have to have it as a, the board approved that, but I would, my own personal, but I will be open to the board, is by sometime in the spring, we begin to sort of map out a calendar of how that input will look. Is that amenable to the board? All right, well, believe it or not, we have gotten through our agenda. Please note that our next meeting is a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors on December 1st, and then the regular School Board meeting will be on December 10th at 7:00 PM here as well. So thank you all, you all have a good evening, stay well, and we are adjourned.